That would be my concern. And if this all goes through, it's very exciting. It has been in the plan for a long time. And I look forward to Regional Park someday being there. So, thank you very much. And congratulations on moving this forward, Mike. It's a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any additional public comment? No, okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments, concerns?
Just a question. As far as recreation use, because I know the high school cross-country team still uses that for recreation, would that still be, will they still be able to use that for recreation purposes, or would that have to go through the county?
Can we try to answer that? I think that eventually that we'll be looking at a shared use.
Of some sort of agreement to allow them to use the property. We have not worked out the details of that at this time.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments or questions? Is there a motion on the table?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution, I know there's not a...
We did 2021-Next.
That we adopt draft resolution number 2021-Next to acknowledge San Diego County 2035 general plan conformity for the potential acquisition of said property to recommend general plan land use map amendment to designate the site and neighboring currently county-owned property as part of the park's land use designation and to refer the action to City of Hollister for determination and capability within the City of Hollister general plan.
Is there a second?
All second.
Commissioner Julio Rodriguez, seconds. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Thank you. Motion passes. Item number eight, planning commissioner training.
Yes, if I may, commissioners, this is Joel Ellenwood, the Assistant County Counsel. And I have prepared a presentation on California land use and environmental law that I'd like to share with you. And so I will just on show air. So, good evening. Again, I'm Joel Ellenwood. I have a master's city of regional planning and a Juris Doctor degree from Rutgers University. And I'm the Assistant County Counsel. One of my assignments is for the Planning and Building Department. And so I'm pleased to share with you this presentation that I originally presented to the Board of Supervisors. I think perhaps Commissioner Gibson may have attended that as well, so I apologize for repetition, but there's a lot of content here. This was designed for about a 20-minute presentation. It's a distillation of a continuing education presentation I made with another attorney with a law firm I was associated with at the time in 2006 that lasted for four hours. So, it's a lot of content in a short period of time. I hope you're with me. So, in looking at the sources of the law, there are many. And we are part of the Anglo-American tradition of jurisprudence, which goes back to the common law originating in England and continuing in its development in this country. And there are a number of areas of the common law that are particularly applicable to land use. One is the notion of private property and the problem of the commons, that there is an overriding interest of the public in how land is used, and that has to coincide with the notion of private property. That plays out in constitutional issues and many others as well. But some of the key concepts from the common law is the law of nuisance. In other words, you can't use your property in such a way as to harm others and trespass the rights of others to use property that's owned privately. So, those common law concepts got incorporated in the federal and state constitutional law in terms of affirmation of property rights and the general concept of the police power, the ability of government to regulate the health, safety, and welfare, which in itself may affect private property rights. The concept of due process and equal protection and elements of the Bill of Rights, freedom of speech, religion, association, privacy, and travel all have land use implications. And in California in particular, there is the right of initiative and referendum. In other words, all political rights are reserved to the people, and that they can be expressed through initiative and referendum, which is sometimes referred to as ballot box planning. And that has particularly challenges for planning, as recent experiences testify. And then, of course, the state and federal statutes and the regulations implementing those statutes, as well as local ordinances, resolutions, and orders are all elements of the statutory law that applies to land use. Courts interpret the constitution and statutes at both the federal and state level and also administrative agencies, including the federal government, state and regional agencies. And local governments also have administrative interpretations of statutes and ordinances. And some special districts, such as schools, water, and sewer agencies, establish rules that also apply. So, what is your role as a planning commissioner? You advise the Board of Supervisors on the general plan and on amendments to ordinances having to do with land use. And you act as a quasi-adjudicatory body to decide things like tentative subdivision maps and conditional use permits, variances, and waivers that may apply. And decisions that you make in those areas are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors. So, in that sense, you have both legislative authority, in which case you act in an advisory capacity about making policies and rules of general application, such as the general and specific plans, ordinances, and development agreements. All of those come before you to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. And then you also have what's referred to as quasi-adjudicatory authority, where you act like a court, if you will, to how to apply those rules and standards to specific properties. And that could be a variance, a use permit, a subdivision map, or design review. And in acting in that adjudicatory capacity, you have specific obligations to provide due process, which includes a notice to all the affected parties, not just the property owners and the surrounding property owners, but generalized notice published in the newspaper in advance of public hearings. And to conduct those hearings in a fair, through a fair process, in which you rely on the evidence that is submitted through staff reports and testimony, both from the applicant and concerned parties during the fair hearing, to support your decision to approve or disapprove the matter before you. And again, decisions that you make in a quasi-adjudicatory capacity are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors. The procedures are determined by the type of authority being exercised, whether you're working in a legislative capacity or a quasi-adjudicatory capacity. And that has to do with the type of notice for the public hearing that would be given. Feel free to interrupt me with any questions you may have as we go along here. So, California has a plethora of agencies that have some role in the land use. And so I refer to that as the California Land Use Hierarchy. At the state level, there is sort of been a coordination role. It's an office appointed by the governor, the Office of Planning and Research. And they promulgate the SEQA and general plan guidelines that are incorporated in the California Code of Regulations that provide detail about how the general plan and SEQA are to be administered. And they maintain the database of the SEQA clearinghouse with the documents that are prepared pursuant to SEQA and the process and records related to that. There are various state agencies that have a great deal of authority as far as land use is concerned. Of course, that includes Caltrans and the Transportation Commission, which has to do with the development and maintenance of state highways. There are natural resources agencies, including the Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Department of Forestry and CalFire. All have regulations that impact and statutes that impact land use. There are the Air and Water Boards, the California Air Resources Board, and Water Quality Control Board, and Regional Water Quality Control Boards, which have to do with air quality and water quality, both in terms of drinking water, wastewater, and surface water. The Department of Housing and Community Development has particular authority with respect to the housing element of the general plan. So, as you touched upon with the report given today. And then there are regional authorities. There's a Regional Air Quality Control District, Air Pollution Control District, and Regional Water Quality Control Boards, plus councils of governments which operate at a county level, including representatives of the cities and the county, having largely to do with transportation planning. And then, of course, there are local agencies. And one of the ones that is not given a lot of recognition but is extremely important in land use development is the Local Agency Formation Commission. There is one for every county, and that coordinates the provision of urban services by cities, counties, or special districts. An example would be the Sunny Slope County Water District, which provides water in certain service areas and water and sewer and others. And so the local agency formation approves the formation of special districts or reorganization or dissolution of them, and establishes the boundaries, approves annexations, and the spheres of influence for those agencies. In California, cities and counties traditionally have the control of local planning and zoning, and that is based on the Constitution, which says that the county or city may make and enforce within its limits all local police, sanitary, and other ordinances not in conflict with general, and by general laws, those are state laws. So, if there is a conflict, there's what's known as the doctrine of preemption. You can have either state or federal preemption of local ordinances. But by and large, land use is traditionally, land use, planning, and zoning are traditionally within the control of local governments, counties, and cities. And of course, you know, cities and counties are local agencies that have the same status under state law as far as land use is concerned. So, each has their exclusive jurisdiction within its boundaries. They have spheres of influence in planning areas that may, of cities, which may extend beyond their boundaries. And so there's an interplay between city and county governments in planning decisions. An example of that was the general plan conformance of the acquisition of the, transfer of property from the school district to the county. And part of the land that's going to be transferred is within the city limits. But that land will be owned by the county, and county land within the city limits is not subject to land use jurisdiction of the city. Even though they are to report on their conformance with the city general plan, the county is not constrained by what the city general plan is as far as county property, county-owned property is concerned. I've given you the example of special districts. They are, generally speaking, service providers that have no general police power, so they don't have planning or zoning authority. That's within the realm of cities or counties. At the center of planning and zoning in California law is the general plan, which is referred to as the Constitution for Land Use. All government decisions affecting the use of land must be considered, must be consistent with the general plan. So, you will be asked to make findings of consistency with the general plan with respect to most of the decisions that you have to make as a planning commission. So, the general plan, every decision, including capital improvements made by the county or city, the acquisition or sale of land is to be consistent with the general plan, hence the review that you conducted earlier this evening with respect to the Regional Park acquisition. And then zoning, use permits, subdivision maps, specific plans, and development agreements all must be found to be consistent with the general plan in order for them to be approved. A general plan is a comprehensive document. It is required to be internally consistent and to have a long-term view, generally speaking, 20 to 30 years in view. And it consists of a statement of policies, diagrams and maps, objectives, principles, standards, and proposed implementation measures. It requires annual progress reports, again, as you reviewed this evening. And there are certain mandatory elements, which include land use, circulation, housing, conservation, open space, noise, safety. Now, there's a justice element, as well as a housing element, which is more frequently required to be updated, and is, the law with respect to housing elements is extremely complex and becoming more so, it seems, every year. The legislature seems to think that by amending planning and zoning and housing laws, it can actually help solve the housing crisis rather than funding actual building, infrastructure, or housing. But that's an editorial comment of my own. So, the adoption or amendment of the general plan has a process that's laid out in the law. That includes tribal consultation and workshops and public hearings conducted by you, the planning commission, with a resolution for recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. Then the Board of Supervisors itself conducts public hearings following the receipt of your report. And if they want to make changes that were not considered by you as the planning commission, they must refer those proposed changes back to you for your recommendation. And the Board of Supervisors adopts a general plan by resolution, not by ordinance. It's just the peculiarity of the way the land use laws are written. So, they adopt it by resolution. And it may be combined with other land use approvals to provide consistency. So, when you're considering a development agreement, I mean, a specific development of proposal, it may include a general plan amendment, a zoning map amendment, a specific plan approval, and a subdivision map. So, all of those land use approvals could be combined in a single application for your review and approval. All adoption of a general plan or amendment of the general plan is subject to the right of voters to initiative and referendum. So, the voters can propose general plan amendments. For example, the group Preserve Our Rural Communities started, proposed a general plan amendment by initiative that called for removing all of the commercial notes that are included in the 2035 San Benito County General Plan, and would require, would have required voter approval for any change land use designation from an agricultural land use designation to some non-agricultural use, whether that be residential, commercial, or industrial. They did not complete circulation of that proposed initiative measure within the time provided, and so that did not go forward. But more recently, of course, there was Measure N, the proposed general plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, and specific plan approval for the Strada Verde proposal. That was rejected by the voters. But that does not mean that the applicant cannot continue to process those entitlement requests through the normal process to the planning commission and ultimate approval by the Board of Supervisors. Should that happen, then it would be subject to a referendum, the right of referendum, for the voters to decide whether or not they wanted to approve or reject those approvals. So, zoning is a means of implementing the general plan, land use designation. Generally speaking, there are regulations about the compatibility or integration of uses. Typically, that was by separating the uses into separate classifications of types, such as agricultural, industrial, commercial, or residential, with different intensities of each. Or you could have mixed-use zones for commercial and industrial, or mixed-use zones of residential and commercial being more common. And typically, they include a minimum lot or parcel size, the height, bulk, setback, parking, sidewalk, or utility and undergrounding requirements that would be set forth for any of those, in any of those types of districts. The zoning ordinance provisions must be consistent with the general plan, and a finding made that they are also consistent with the general public health, safety, and welfare. And those are findings that you would have to make based on evidence in the record before you for any of those applications. And so zoning ordinances are adopted or amended with a process similar to the general plan, which would, again, go through a referral to the planning commission to make recommendations for adoption by the Board of Supervisors. Again, zoning is subject to voter initiative and referendum. An example would be Measure K, in which a zoning amendment to establish the C3 zoning district for the commercial notes along Highway 101 was rejected by the voters after it had been recommended for approval by the planning commission and adopted by the Board of Supervisors. And as I said before, zoning amendments can be combined with general plans, specific plans, subdivision map approvals, and development agreements, all in a single package. So, different zoning districts, generally speaking, include a list of uses that are permitted by right and other uses that could be permitted with conditional use permits. And conditional use permits are, again, subject to approval by the planning commission. Unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors, your approval of the conditional use permit becomes final. Variances are another example, where the planning commission has the authority to grant or deny them. And that is where specific circumstances of a particular parcel require a modification or a waiver of standards to allow uses that otherwise would be permitted, you know, except for the unusual size, shape, or topography of the parcel. That would be a basis for granting a variance. Again, that has to be based on specific findings made, based on evidence in the record before the commission. Subdivision map act is another land use regulation, statutory scheme, and that is for regulation and control and design of improvements for subdivision of land for the purpose of sale, lease, or financing. It typically includes provisions for street and frontage improvements, utilities, drainage, stormwater. drainage, storm we- stormwater, landscaping, parks, schools, site dedication and, uh, subject to development impact fees, et cetera. Um, uh, they are, um, consist of either parcel maps, which are for, for, of pure lots or tentative and final subdivision maps for, uh, subdivisions involving a larger number of parcels. Uh, ag- again, uh, consistency with the general plan, zoning and general public s- health, safety and welfare is required to approve, uh, a subdivision map. It is a quasi adjudicatory decision and because it's not a legislative act, it is not subject to initiative or referendum. Tentative maps are approved by the planning commission and they are subject to appeal to the board of supervisors. That's under the San Benito County Code. Um, it's possible for counties to designate planning commissions as only having advisory capacity, but that's not the case in San Benito County and probably true of most counties in California, but, uh, it's not true everywhere. The Subdivision Map Act has mandatory timelines for review and approval, including appeals. And if those timelines are not met, the, the, um, plans can be approved, um, by operation of law. It may require litigation, uh, to enforce those, those provisions, but can, um, end up having, uh, a project approved by not, uh, processing it in a timely fashion. So there are a lot of other elements of, uh, the planning and zoning law, including the Permit Streamlining Act, the Mitigation Fee Act, which says how, how mitigation fees are adopted and what's, what's allowed to be included in them, um, to, to distinguish them from, uh, taxes. Um, and, uh, a development agreements law, which is a way of, um, providing, uh, secure regulations for long-range development, uh, of, uh, large projects that, uh, would only be, um, developed over a longer period of time than the Subdivision Map Act normally allows. Um, there are secondary dwelling unit and density bonus laws, uh, financing district laws, affordable housing laws, and in the industrial, um, commercial element, the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act. All of those, um, laws could in one way or another, uh, come before you in, uh, with development projects that, uh, you might be considering, uh, approving or making recommendations to the board for approval. Uh, everyone's, uh, heard about CEQA. That's the, the acronym for the California Environmental Quality Act. C E Q A is the acronym, acronym. Uh, it's part of the Public Resources Code and there is extensive case law interpreting CEQA that, uh, applies to it. Uh, CEQA applies to all discretionary government decisions that may cause significant effects to the physical environment. So not just planning, but any, uh, kind of decisions, uh, to, uh, you know, acquire property, to build new facilities, to, uh, build roads, uh, any of those kinds of decisions, um, are subject to CEQA. Uh, and what CEQA requires is identification, analysis and disclosure of potentially significant environmental effects of any of those decisions. Um, and that's environmental effects to the physical environment and where it's feasible to avoid or mitigate effects to a less than significant level prior to project approval. The heart of CEQA is often referred to as the Environmental Impact Report, or E I R. It has the most deferential standard of judicial review and it allows for the adoption of voter overriding con- considerations to approve projects even though they have significant and unavoidable environmental effects if there are appropriate findings supported by substantial evidence. Uh, the E I R is the only way that you can, uh, adopt, um, you can approve projects that do have unavoidable environmental effects. Uh, if however, you can, um, find ways, uh, first of all, there are projects that are exempt from CEQA, uh, such as the example being the, uh, acquisition of parklands, uh, for which there is not already, uh, a plan for the development of the park and that exemption applied to the transfer, that applies to the transfer of property from the high school district to the county, both agencies of which would be subject to CEQA for that decision, except that the exemption applies in this particular circumstance. Um, if there, if there is a way to design the project or to impose mitigation measures that are, uh, effective in reducing potentially significant effects to a level less than significant, the project can be approved through what's known as a mitigated negative declaration, a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration. Uh, however, those are subject to, uh, a much lower threshold of, um, uh, uh, a deference. Uh, um, so if a fair argument can be made on the basis of substantial, uh, evidence in the record, considered as a whole, that a project may have potentially significant effects, then an E I R is required. And this is the, kind of the centerpiece of a great deal of litigation that occurs around CEQA as to whether or not an E I R should be required. And if the E I R is adopted, is it adequate, uh, in giving notice of the potentially significant effects, consideration of alternatives and mitigation measures and so forth? That process begins by doing an initial study of, of, uh, proposed projects. Uh, if a, it's determined that an E I R is necessary to hold a scoping meeting and then prepare a draft E I R, uh, for which, uh, there's a public circulation period, uh, and the requirement to accept public comments. And then before an E I R can be adopted, uh, there has to be a response to those public comments and the preparation of a final E I R before it can be certified for project approval. Uh, and again, E I Rs will come before the planning commission, uh, for review and recommendation to the board of supervisors in many cases. Uh, but an E I R are, for example, prepared for a, uh, a large subdivision may, uh, it may be subject to approval by the planning commission itself, uh, certification. So, um, uh, you can expect to hear a great deal more about CEQA at, as, uh, your term continues. Uh, CEQA court challenges have a, have a short time period, uh, statute of limitations is the term, after a decision has been made and a notice of exemption or a notice of determination is filed. And the CEQA litigation process, I don't think I really need to go into for you this evening, but I'd be happy to address those, um, with future questions, uh, as the time So there are many other environmental laws. Uh, if, if a, um, a project involves some kind of federal government involvement, whether it's funding or, uh, federal agency involvement, it may require compliance with the analog at the federal level to CEQA, which is the National Environmental Policy Act. And, uh, CEQA and NEPA compliance can be combined in a single process if necessary. Uh, there are many other, uh, environmental laws, both, uh, at the state and the federal level, being the Clean Water Act, uh, the, uh, California, uh, originated, uh, the analog for the Federal Clean Water Act, which is the Porter Cologne Water Quality, uh, Act. And there are federal and state threatened or endangered species acts and California Fish and Game Code, um, uh, regulations having to do with, uh, stream bed alterations, um, which in a stream bed could be just a seasonal drainage, uh, to, uh, major water bodies. Um, there's federal and state clean air acts, uh, the California Global Warming Solutions Act, Senate Bill Thirty-two, uh, the National and Stark Preservation Act and, uh, Resource Recovery and Reclamation Act among, uh, among others. Uh, so, uh, that's a brief overview. I thank you for your time and attention. I, I look, look forward to working with you, um, uh, as the legal advisor to the planning commission, uh, going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Next, right? We don't have any public comment on that item.
Is there any public comment?
There. No public comment? Public comment is closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, Planning Commissioner announcements, uh, May fifth through seventh, there is a virtual conference available to any commissioner that wishes to participate. If you could please let Principal Planner Tavon Kinison-Brown know at your earliest convenience, if you'd like to participate, the county will cover the costs. Also, if it already has not been done, it will be done shortly, you will be members of the, uh, American Planning Association and you get a quarterly magazine that has some good articles. Uh, there is one in there from sometime last year that I'll be forwarding to you. It's a good, good article about, uh, planning for older folks. There should be a, a signup some point, hopefully before the next meeting for the ethics training. Is that something that was being worked on? Uh, you should be getting an email with a link to take an ethics course that covers the Brown Act and some other laws that apply to our actions that we take.
Commission aware that you can do that online? The, okay.
Yes. Yeah, but the, we have to, you'll provide the link for that? Is that?
Yeah, we can send that out.
Yeah, we can send the link and it's likely a certificate that just gets returned to the county.
Yeah, it's, and we have to do it every, every two years.
Every two years. And, um, historically, I believe that traditionally, and there's been so much turnover in the county, that they also had the planning commissioners do the mandatory sexual harassment training. Which is another two hours of.
Anti, anti harassment.
Oh, oh, thank you. Do, uh, other commissioners have any announcements or?
You know, just as a follow-on through the chair is, um, you know, we, we've changed over four, four out of five chairs and, um, um, I'm, I can be your resource if you have questions or calls or you just need, uh, feel like you want thirty minutes, um, on a particular project, a particular subject, or even, um, maybe, uh, through the chair, what you might suggest for, uh, study sessions. So, and, uh, if you do have the subject matters or an idea that you want to bring back to the commission for discussion, please pass that through the chair at a, at a hearing or maybe by email so that we can, uh, be well coordinated with those information efforts.
Thank you. Yes, I also believe staff will be sending you an email, uh, requesting your goals or any particular things you want to accomplish during your tenure. That will go through staff and that will come back to the commission and we can discuss it and prioritize the list. So you, once you have access to your email, look for that. I think you have a few that are already in your inbox. So, uh, just start paying attention, maybe on a bi-weekly basis, check your county email 'cause you never know when something's being sent to you. Is there a, uh, motion to adjourn? Commissioner Pack, is there a second? Commissioner Robert Rodriguez seconds. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned at seven twenty-seven.